To order. Good evening. My name is John Samia and I'm the Chair of the Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen. On behalf of my fellow board members in the Town Manager's Office, I want to welcome you to our September 14th, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting. Tonight's live broadcast is being brought to you by Mark Sarah of the Shrewsbury Media Connection. In addition to tonight's live broadcast on Channels 30, 330, and Facebook, tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on Channels 30 and 330 from tomorrow until our next regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, September 28th, 2021. Tonight's meeting will also be available on YouTube starting tomorrow for your viewing enjoyment. First item in the agenda is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Second.
Have been moving second to all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item in the agenda is to approve minutes of our workshop on August 18th, 2021, and our last meeting on August 24th, 2021. Is there a motion?
Move we approve.
Second.
Have moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item announcements and reports. Colleagues, any announcements or reports? I don't have any either, so we'll go to the Town Manager's report. Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening, Board members. A couple of quick updates for you tonight. First, we remain on schedule for the closing on the Allen Farm property for next week, which is really exciting. We've certainly never been this close before, and everything's a go. We'll be working with our financial advisor later this week to finalize all the bond repayment matters and work out the closing financial matters with Town Council. So we're excited to be selling off that piece of property for economic development, which is what was intended in 2002. So happy to get that all finalized. We have been, I'm happy to announce that we've been awarded $50,000 through Lieutenant Governor's Community Compact Grant Program for our strategic plan project, which will really enable us to have enough resources in place to carry out a professional and very intentional community engagement project to set a vision and strategic plan for the community through 2030. And I'd just like to take the opportunity that the Board has given me on behalf of the Board to thank everyone for their attendance at the police station groundbreaking that we had last Friday, two Fridays ago at this point. So it was great to see so many members of the community and the police force out there to join us in that wonderful ceremony. So thank you to everyone. I can continue on through the COVID report.
Any questions on anything there? Please, go ahead.
Providing an update through September 14th, which is today, there have been 140 additional COVID-19 cases reported since August 24th, which was your last meeting. In the last seven days, there's been 65 additional positive cases within the community. We continue to report cases out once a week every Friday, including our vaccination numbers, which I'll share in a minute. You can see, Board members, unfortunately, since your last Board meeting, or it's really hard to see, but please let me share with you that we've seen an increase in the daily case totals, really since about the end of August. So the curve has gotten steeper. It's really hard to see on that screen, but we're moving into a period of, you know, where we were about 45 to 50 cases a week, and we're climbing into the low to mid 60s every week. So just encouraging everyone to do what they can, get vaccinated, and help us stop the spread of the virus. We continue to review town policies. We've done a survey of town employees. As of this afternoon, of our 250 employees, about 100 have responded, and I'm really happy to say that over 95% of the respondents have indicated that they are fully vaccinated, so very high percentage, which isn't surprising, but we're lucky to have that. And that will help us shape our employment policies moving forward with regards to COVID-19. With regards to vaccination data, there's been increase of 475 individuals that have at least got their first dose and 520 additional fully vaccinated since your last Board meeting on August 21st, and we approach 70% fully vaccinated within the community. That is a detailed report on the vaccination within various age bands, with the highest vaccination cohort still being 65 to 74 years of age, and the lowest being 20 to 29 years of age. So in total, 75% of the residents who are eligible have received at least one vaccine, vaccination. That's in my COVID report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I just have one.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Mizikar, in the news lately, I've been hearing different companies saying that if their employees aren't fully vaccinated, then they would see an increase in their health insurance premiums. Are we noticing anything like that on our end, or is it nothing really to speak of right now?
No, nothing to speak of. No indication. We are fully insured, so we would make that determination ourselves. I'm not sure the status of those other companies. There's also some legal implications on, from our Town Council, whether or not such measures are able to be enacted for employees. So we would have to be pretty cautious moving into that. We did do that employee survey to kind of understand where we were and, you know, see what the likely effectiveness of any vaccine mandates or additional measures would mean for staff. And again, I think it's a really good position where we're over 95% voluntarily identified, and perhaps we move to getting vaccination cards at some point in the future, but we'll take it one step at a time and see how things are.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Kevin, does the executive order not apply to the town, the requirement that employees be vaccinated?
Right. It does not. Not from the state. The state, the governor eliminated it to his executive branch employees, and then the federal mandate did not include other levels of governments. The state and local governments are not included in that either.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. We'll go on to the next item, item number six, under Financial Business Preliminary Year End. Back to you, Mr. Mizikar.
I just need to switch screens. All right. So I wanted to provide the Board an opportunity to understand a little bit how we closed out fiscal year '21 as we moved in kind of the final phases of submitting for free cash and tying out the financials and having our auditor in reconciling cash at this point. So fiscal year '21 closed on June 30th, 2021. Just a couple slides, very high level, and a future meeting, and as we work into the fiscal year '23 budget process, we can tie out some more details based upon your feedback and upcoming meetings as we move into the special town meeting. So everyone will recall the fiscal year '21 budget in total for municipal operations and school operations. This excludes our roughly $25 million in utilities. Our budget was $125.2 million. Unexpended budget appropriations, which we refer to as turnbacks, totaled $1.9 million, which is about 1.55% of total budget appropriations. So my probably line that everyone rolls their eyes at is $1.9 million would look really good in my bank account at the end of the year, but really it's only 1.5% of what Town Meeting gave us. And I think that's well within any margin that we'd ever want to budget within. So I'm very pleased that the effective use of the resources that Town provided and that we are able to carry out through fiscal year '21. Again, about 1.55% left over. A little deeper dive, if we take a look onto the revenue side, we did experience less real estate collections in fiscal year '21 than in fiscal year '20. Certainly an indicator of the, I think, general impact of COVID-19 on the economy. That's not on the screen right now. This is local receipts, but just kind of my talking points. It's about $800,000 in uncollected real estate, which isn't extremely a lot of money for any given fiscal year since we collected or anticipated collecting about $87 million in real estate. However, there are some years, given that prior year payments were made, where we don't increase the total outstanding real estate from a net standpoint, but this year we certainly did. So we had some lagging payments in that primary revenue category. When we look at the revenue categories that most impacted by the general economic conditions and discretionary spending of our residents or individuals within the community for fiscal year '21, we certainly exceeded my expectations. We had budgeted about $10.4 million for local receipts and realized $13.1 million. So if I take a look at fiscal year '19, '20, and '21, we had had a lot of conversations in the spring of 2020 about what type of economic recovery we may experience. Would it be a V? Would it be a W? Would it be a U with a prolonged downtime, with a number of fiscal years being impacted by the pandemic? Fortunately, it looks like we're experiencing a V. Fiscal year '19 and '21 are rather similar. We certainly haven't gained back our growth trajectory that we had from '17 in prior years through fiscal year '19, but we have seemingly recovered at least back to fiscal year '19 levels, with fiscal year '20 being kind of the anomaly that's being shown there on the screen. So if I take a little bit of a deeper dive in the fiscal year '21 receipts, our primary category, again, out of the $13 million that we collected, comes in from motor vehicle excise taxes. Certainly, motor vehicle sales continue to be impacted by a number of global economic challenges, including microchip supply. I'm very pleased that we actually met our budgeted estimate, which didn't come through until June. In many years that, we've already met our budgeted amount in April or May. But we exceeded our budgeted amount by about $269,000, bringing in a total of 6.3 million in motor vehicle excise sales tax receipts. Meals tax excise, a good economic indicator, given everything going on with COVID. We exceeded that budget by $115,000, so over 30%, roughly 30% of what we anticipated. Cannabis-related, this is the first year that we had marijuana, first fiscal year we had marijuana retailers open. So both from marijuana excise tax revenue and our host community agreements, we realized $333,000. Certainly exceeded budget because we didn't anticipate any, which was the plan from this Board from the beginning, to allow the market to help us understand where it wants to go and prudently budget for that, really starting next year in fiscal year '23. And then licensing and permits continues to, I think, be the biggest surprise and driving a lot of, obviously, the amount that we've exceeded our budget by. Within this individual category, we budgeted $800,500 based on the prior year trends, and we realized $1.8 million. So a million dollars overestimate. Now, certainly, a significant portion of this, several hundred thousand, almost $400,000 of this would be attributed to the licenses and permits, really to building permits associated with the Edmire Drive-In redevelopment, and, you know, that successful economic endeavor that's underway there. But a lot of this came in through the smaller permits that you heard about, kind of on the general news, about people investing in their homes, putting in pools. As the pandemic focused, people kind of to their own property. So I don't expect this to contribute, or excuse me, continue in future fiscal years, so we'll have to be smart about how we budget this. This is the highest year on record for licenses and permits as a local receipts category. The second highest year is in 2017, the year that Lakeway Commons pulled most of its permits for that redevelopment project. And in total, that was $1,414,000. So this exceeded even fiscal year '17 by 30%. So a really strong year in this budget category. Very few budget categories across the 26 or so areas that we track were in the negative, but these were kind of the most noteworthy that I wanted to point out to the Board. So really happy to answer any questions that you may have and talk through this as we adjust the budget for the special town meeting in the fall. Look forward to fiscal year '23 budget process beginning pretty soon.
If I could ask the manager, what was the actual in FY '20, no, FY '19 for the meals tax? Do you know?
Yep. It was $562,928.
Five sixty-two.
Yeah, so still below.
Yeah, but considering it bounced back pretty good.
In fiscal year '20, it was, you know, the pandemic year, it was 516, but again, three quarters of that year were good, so to speak. Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Question and a comment.
When will we know in '22 when, to be able to compare and get an idea what '21 is? So if I remember, the first two quarters, that's not really helpful, right? It's the third and fourth quarters, but are you getting any indication? I know it's very early, but are you getting any sense where we are in '22? And is '21, does '20 look like the anomaly? And '21 a bounce back, but faster than the others, or is it way too early to tell?
It's really way too early to tell. I don't have any data for fiscal year '22 receipts yet. We update them monthly, but we're, you know, 15 days into the third month, so we just don't have any data put in yet. I think I'll feel much more comfortable, well, I won't be comfortable until April, once we hit the main motor vehicle excise returns back in. But if we see meals tax in the first quarter, which, you know, will be an October payment from the state, if it remains, you know, 150 or 200,000, I feel really confident that the general economic vitality of the town is still there. So I think that's our best indicator for this period of time.
Okay, thank you. And my comment is, is that sooner rather than later, we'll have to model this out. I mean, we think about when we projected out last spring, and it's hard to figure out what '21 ultimately means for us, but I think we can at least model it out to get a sense of what it could mean until we get that clarity as we, as part of our commitment and we talk to the community, so we have some of that knowledge.
I think one of the good things, too, is, so fiscal year '22 is obviously really conservative in comparison to the actuals for fiscal year '21. So I think that we can build a really good fiscal year '23 in advance of Town Meeting, even if it's a, you know, we can't jump on it in the first quarter. I think we'll be in a really good spot.
And plus with the projections that you had, absolutely. I think we have a good launching point. Anything else? Any other questions?
I just have a comment, just a comment that, you know, it was always a moving target with the budget, and I think you hit it in a really good way by being conservative, keeping us in a very strong position. But I also look at this and think that we're going to be able to make good on that promise that we made with the override, that we are not going to have to use tax dollars all the way up to the nine and a half million, but be able to, you know, take that down a bit and reduce some of that burden on the taxpayers, which to me is just extremely important, to make good on that commitment in any way that we can. I mean, obviously, when you spread it out over such a large tax base, it's not a huge difference for people, but even a small difference is, I think, important, and it also just shows that we are, you know, committed to following through on what we said.
All right, great. Anything else? Did you have?
Were you going to go into real estate taxes?
No, those are my only comments thus far. I don't have a lot of data behind it to share.
I thought you had, I thought you started saying something about real estate taxes.
Yeah. So my comments preliminarily were, is the fiscal year '21 as a whole on real estate tax collections was a little weaker than most normal years. Our outstanding receivables at the end of the fiscal year was a little over $800,000. So it's pretty high for us, but it's still, you know, we still have a upper 90s percent collection rate, you know, anticipating collecting almost $90 million in real estate.
It was 800 over, I mean, 800 under the commitment?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
That had nothing to do with being able to pay your taxes? Well, actually, it would have made it worse.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
If it's from paying at the end of fiscal, whoops, end of fiscal '20, you could, the governor, the governor in that emergency order allowed people to pay later into the year.
Yep.
But that's still counted against last year?
Correct.
You mean '20?
Correct. That was counted against '20.
Okay.
So just, yeah, fiscal year '21 receivables.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, itself, you know, we were about 800,000 under.
Just one other question.
Sure, go ahead.
I know right now we're in transition, so we're not going to have a number soon, but, so do we have any idea what total delinquent taxes are, you know, between tax title and that, or is it too early to know?
It's about $2 million.
That's a little high, isn't it?
It is. I mean, yeah, it's rare a year that we put, add $800,000 to it, so that's why I was flagging that. Yep. Thank you.
Thanks. Good. That's it for that. Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Next item is under new business. Review and act on recreational marijuana delivery operator host community agreement with Many Rivers LLC. Board members, as you recall, the principles came before us earlier this summer, made a presentation, went through various aspects of the proposed business location, compliance with the state regulations, and at the conclusion of the presentation, we had some questions, and then we authorized the Town Manager to move forward with negotiating the host community agreement, which is in front of us. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mizikar to talk about that.
Thank you. Board members, over the course of the little over, you know, two-plus weeks, we've been in negotiations with the two gentlemen that are here this evening from Many Rivers LLC for host community agreement for marijuana delivery company. Certainly had, you know, an agreement that we started with, that the Board has familiarity with, that we used in prior agreements, and it was modified and modernized, really, because there's been a lot of changes in the marijuana space over the last four years, three or four years since the last agreement was found. I'm pleased with the agreement that we have here before you, and I certainly recommend and request that you would authorize me, subject any changes that you may feel prudent, to enter into this agreement with them and sign it on your behalf. This agreement provides the full maximum host community fee to the town of 3%. It provides sufficient safety provisions to ensure that the applicant moves expeditiously through the Cannabis Control Commission process, although that's not as important as it has been in the past, as we don't have a cap on this type of license, given the state laws and our process to put that in place, where with the other retailers, we were looking at two licenses, and we didn't want anyone to sit on one. And it provides many legal provisions that protect both the town and the applicant sufficiently. So I think it was a good negotiating process with the partners there, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the agreement. You can find these materials in your drive in a separate folder. There's three documents, which is an original, which sent out at the end of last week, and then there's a couple minor revisions that were made in the last minute as we finalized the agreement with regards, some indemnification language. We did strike a section with regards to the use of how the town will spend the host community fee that comes in from the COs, as it's really irrelevant to the agreement. The town must spend it within its statutory authority, and it doesn't really pertain to these two parties directly. So happy to answer any questions you may have about the agreement.
Chairman.
Yeah, Mrs. Flynn.
Just a minor question, Kevin, with regard to the provision about the agreement terminating, you struck out 12 months for failure to commence operation to 24 months. Is there a particular reason for that?
Yep. So, so really, when we are looking at the first retailer agreements, and we had two licenses, we didn't want someone to come in, enter into host community agreement with the Board, and then not take meaningful action in a short amount of time, which was about a year to go through the rest of the CCC process. The Board had made a commitment at that time that they were only going to ever negotiate two retail agreements, so we didn't want someone not putting that to work and raising the revenue that we can get from it. So through negotiations with Many Rivers, they had concerns over the 12-month duration, given the pandemic and CCC scheduling and things like that. And there's a couple iterations going back and forth, and we finally settled on the 12 months, which is, again, double the duration, but I think the town doesn't have the same level of risk that we did when we had a limited amount of licenses.
Thank you.
Mrs. Paul?
Well, I just had, I, I personally, I'm just concerned about this one. I'm not comfortable with it. I'm just not sure this is something that I want to see the town do. So, and I don't think it would make any difference who it was. I just, I know it's a little bit different position than I took on the other two, but I'm just not comfortable with it. So I just want the rest of the Board to know. I'm not going to be voting in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar, just a couple thoughts in the agreement that I see. If we move forward with this, I would ask that the Board, proven substantially the form under indemnification, just like to get some clarification with Council on one of the provisions that was added, particularly the interpretation on the application of the indemnity and what that means in terms to fail to prevail. Just get clarity on that. I'm not proposing new language. Just get understanding there. And the second piece is under Section 13. I appreciate that Many Rivers did add language, as they said they would regarding change of controls under, so under Section 13, successors in assignment, there's this language saying that if the company seeks to add additional members, whether investors or otherwise, the company, and then it said, "provide prior notice." I don't know, will it, shall, may, or what that word should be, but under there, it's not clear what it means. So if it shall provide, that makes sense. It's just missing a word. So I don't know if that's a permissive or a requirement. So that just would be helpful. I just think that's an oversight there. But those are just a couple of the technical points. One other question that I have, and just for my education standpoint, that the default provisions in here, the cure provisions in here, and the remedies, is that any possibility to be trumped by state statute, or that the actual relationship can be governed by contract?
It's my understanding, according to our Council, it can be governed through this.
Okay.
We are obviously in the web of the CCC regulations, but it's my understanding it can be.
Okay. All right, thank you. What's the pleasure of the Board, or any other comments on this, or the business generally, or the agreement, or what's the pleasure of the Board, or thoughts on this arrangement?
Personally, I am comfortable with what I see here outlined. I think it's consistent with what our other marijuana host community agreements entailed, and I think that delivery is everywhere. And if it isn't here, then it's in Shrewsbury, then these guys are going to pack up and head to the next town that's geographically convenient and set up there. So I would like to see this as an, take this as an opportunity to see how this plays out in town, and have the opportunity to get the revenue from this business locating here.
I agree. I think that it's in line with our economic development initiatives, and I agree that there's revenue opportunity for the town, and I would also like to see us try this.
Yeah, the, can we say this last meeting? I think they can go to Grafton or go to Worcester and still have reach, so. I think, um, they can go to Grafton or go to Worcester and still have reach, so, um, and the applicants complied with all requirements of the state statute, so I'm comfortable with it, um, more so after they've added the provision about notice on change of control, so at least we'll know who we're dealing with. So, and, understanding in the additional, initial materials, that additional investment would be expected, we're going to know who those players are. So I appreciate that, so we'll at least know that at all times. That, I think, is a, a pretty aggressive provision, um, and I appreciate that being included in the agreement, beneficial towards us, and that gives us an understanding as to who the parties will be, plus with the additional requirements that are in here, so I'm comfortable moving forward as well. Um, but I also, um, you know, appreciate the, the flip end of that, too, that Mr. DePaulo has said, so I understand that as well, so.
Can I just?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, I'm not going to go into every reason why, why I have decided not to go forward on this, but, um, I feel a little bit that it, um, it kind of violates the spirit of what we said about two, um, dispensaries in town. I know it's, um, I know it's, this is something a little bit different, it's home delivery, but it's still another dispensary, in, in a sense. Excuse me. And going through town meeting and making the representations we did, I just feel, it's one of the reasons I feel uncomfortable with it. I understand the benefits to it, um, but, um, I thought we were pretty clear, we don't only have two, and I know we're not bound by that, and I know this law's a little bit different, or this part of the law, but I'm still a little, it, it, something just doesn't feel right about it, so.
Okay.
Mr. Samia.
Yes, Mr. Mizikar.
So in going back and reviewing some of the, um, text of the language that we negotiated, the, the, Many Rivers did indicate in their language, which, there's a typo, um, when it got converted into the final document, that they shall return to the board selectmen with regards, so there's clearly a word missing in the final document that I will add in, and.
Sure, thank you.
Have the review.
That's helpful. So it's a little.
Um, I just wanted to respond to Mr. DePaulo's point. I, I understand what you're saying, and back when this first came about, um, that the CCC had basically started talking about this.
Thank you.
Delivery license, and I, I know as a board, we sent a letter, um, saying that it felt like the rules were changing on us, and that, you know, the work that we did to negotiate with town meeting, you know, bring, um, this whole, um, opportunity to have, whether or not we wanted to have marijuana retailers in town, because we did vote no on question four, and I think it was 2016, it seemed like we did all that work, we went through this whole exercise as a town, and as a town meeting, we made a decision, and then the CCC sort of changed the, the rules on us, uh, without allowing us any real recourse. So I completely can understand your perspective on why you wouldn't want to support this. Having sat on the, um, public hearing about delivery, uh, I was the, actually the last person on the waiting list to speak that day. I never, they never got to me, um, but it was six hours of testimony, basically in favor of this, um, from an equity standpoint, and lowering the threshold for accessing, um, this market as a businessperson. Uh, and so in that regard, I feel like I'm comfortable supporting it from that standpoint also. Um, the rules obviously did change from the CCC, but within that framework, um, I think that we just are able to move ahead, I'm able to move ahead with this and feel comfortable.
So was there a motion to, um, approve the agreement we have under item seven, that what it could, the language could be, and substantially the form with such, um, minor changes as the town manager would make? Are we comfortable with doing that, to make the change with shell and a couple other, with the indemnity, too? So if so, I'd entertain a motion.
Um, I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Gassan.
Um, I move that we approve the recreational marijuana delivery operator host community agreement with Many Rivers LLC, uh, to include the changes as discussed this evening.
Second?
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no.
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Thank you. Thank you for all of your feedback. Thank you for coming this evening as well.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is number eight, to review the draft warrant for the October 18th, 2021 special town meeting. Turn it over to you, Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you, Mr. Samia. So at this time, board members, we have 12, uh, potential warrant articles, um, for consideration by town meeting, and, um, we'll not be signing the warrant this evening, we're just reviewing the warrant in its draft, draft form. The, the warrant as presented to you this evening with the individual articles that are on there has been reviewed to counsel, by counsel, so I'm confident in the language and the articles that we've presented, and at the end, um, I will talk about a, a couple potential, uh, changes that may be made. I'm not going to get into a lot of details, but I can answer any questions, and then certainly we'll, we'll have to get into some details, uh, next week, and then, and you'll have one additional meeting thereafter, uh, prior to the special town meeting on October 18th. So the first is to, um, establish an insurance trust fund. So over the course of the past two years, uh, worked with, uh, the team in our office collectively with, um, our insurance, uh, broker, to find the most, um, I think valuable and meaningful way to insure risk for the town, and part of that has been transitioning, um, uh, some of our policies to having, um, higher deductibles. So our general liability, professional liability, workers' compensation, and injured on duty, which is workers' compensation for uniform service members, police and fire, um, is about a million dollars in total, um, and some of those accounts, including injured on duty, have substantial deductibles, $45,000 a year. Um, and those deductibles follow the individual that may be injured, so if someone's injured on June 30th, um, and they're the only person that had been injured that year, and we have a $45,000 deductible, we could be paying up to $45,000 over the next two or three years to settle out their medical claims as they seek treatment and have procedures. So, um, as you know, the general budget process, you know, everything expires on June 30th, and then we use our new budget going forward. Um, so that being one reason for multi-year flexibility, and then also just to try to manage the ebbs and flows and only have to budget really what we need to in the operating budget every year, we're proposing the establishment of an insurance trust fund, where we'd regularly, occasionally, uh, place money into, uh, this trust fund, and then draw down upon it to use to pay our deductibles over time. So in a good year where, uh, we have very low claims, um, we will benefit the taxpayers by not having to arbitrarily use those funds and hold them in place to pay our deductibles. Um, and then in, um, more serious years, we'll have to pull funds down out of this account and then replenish them as claims come in. But I really think it's a, a, a very prudent and stable way to manage this, uh, risk, uh, from our deductibles. We have other deductible levels, $7,500 for professional liability, $1,000 for auto liability, so given the size of our, uh, property that, and risk that we insure, we have more substantial deductibles than, I guess, a personal, um, insurance policy may have. So article two is to abolish, so article one is to establish such a fund, article two is to abolish, um, the workers' compensation fund that had previously existed, which was much more limited than we're, than we're seeking right now, and to move those remaining funds, which there's about, um, $40,000 in there, into this new fund that we're creating through article one. And then, um, it'll be determined if we need to add any additional funds beyond that transfer from the existing account into there based upon our insurance needs for the fiscal year. Um, is there, can I just pause there and ask? That's, that's not normal business, so if there's any questions, maybe we want to.
Any questions at all? Go ahead, Mrs. Fly.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, i- is this other than more from a, almost like a stabilization perspective? Is there any other benefit to the town in terms of, um, there's, I'm just trying to figure out if there's.
Yeah, over the short run, there's kind of tax savings, right? So if we, you know, look at our deductibles and we think we need $60,000 in there one year, under the current situation, we'd budget that $60,000 every year for deductibles. If we have a good year and, you know, only utilize 10 or 15, then the following year, we'd only have to kind of just like feed that back, rather than budget 60, turn back 60, you know what I mean? It just, it really, it does, it does help the taxpayer over the, over the short run, but it really is a stabilization fund. Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you. Please proceed. Okay.
So article three, um, is a series of budget transfers that we'll undertake, um, and there's a lot of benefit to the taxpayer, uh, through article three. As I mentioned earlier, we'll be closing on, uh, Centec North, which will eliminate, uh, the debt service requirements, uh, several hundred thousand dollars in principal and interest payments that would be coming due in November of this year, so we'll be able to satisfy that. Uh, there'll be a, you know, we'll have to pay a per diem on our, uh, interest, uh, from the last payment until, um, November, when the payment, or whenever we settle out in September, but, um, overall, a very positive, uh, reduction in the budget. Uh, we also still, uh, have to, um, take the benefit of the Sherwood refinancing that we did in the spring, which would be reducing, um, the budget appropriately, that'll be a, a benefit to the taxpayers. Uh, as we discussed in May of last year, um, with achieving, uh, fully funding in our pension system, we'll be able to significantly reduce the amount of, um, funding that we place into the retirement system. Uh, earlier today, in a meeting this morning, um, about 12 hours ago at this point, uh, the retirement board voted to set a new funding, um, schedule, which will enable us to shift about $2 million away from retirement. Some of it will go into OPEB as we start to fund those obligations, uh, but there will definitely be benefit to the general taxpayers, uh, from that move as well. So there'll be a, a couple other budget adjustments in various departments to clean things up. Uh, one of the things will be funding the remaining amount of our general liability, property liability insurance for the new Beal School, which we got the CEO on in, uh, July, uh, so we didn't have that fully funded, um, and so we'll take care of that, but there'll be some, a couple other recommendations that we'll go over with the board in future weeks. Article four is, um, using the.
Excuse me?
Nope, sure.
So by voting to reduce the pension payment, that's going to affect this fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-huh. We didn't have the opportunity to change it in the spring.
Right, okay. I just want to make sure and.
Yep, fiscal year 22, current year.
Thank you.
Yep, of course. Article four is, um, using funding from the pro, uh, proceeds from the sale of Centec Park North, um, for the reconstruction of the Toblin Hill Bridge and improvements to Nursery Drive, uh, that area, uh, Nursery Drive in particular, is currently under investigation by the Department of Public Works to ensure that we take any steps necessary to ensure some of those, uh, retaining walls in that area, and then, of course, the Toblin Hill Bridge has been closed, um, for over six years at this point, uh, and was demolished, uh, three or four years ago, and, uh, we have a design plan, um, and we'll be looking forward to putting funds in place for that reconstruction, so. Um, uh, proceeds from the sale of Centec Park North are not, uh, um, they have to be used only in certain instances, they can't be used for, uh, general funding purposes, it can only be used for something, uh, from which you can, uh, incur debt for greater than five-year period. So, um, it's called real estate receipts reserve, so anytime this town sells property, it's limited in its use of those funds, and it cannot be just directed back into the operating budget. So this is certainly an appropriate use of funds, um, it's about a $1.5 million reconstruction cost for the bridge, and then we'll look probably several hundred thousand dollars in other repairs in the neighborhood, uh, we'll have to take care of that all at one time, so happy to be able to forward this article for consideration.
Just a quick question, have we seen a substantial increase in building materials at all, related to bridge, not yet?
Uh, I'm not sure if we've gone out and rechecked our estimates, but we always have sufficient.
Okay, the reserve built in there?
You know, contingencies in there of, of 10% or so, on the various different aspects of it, so I think, uh, we're firming it up and we're out to bid, so we'll have an exact number for town meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Mr. DePaulo.
Mr. Mizikar, um, if the amount of, um, net receipts from Centec turn out to be higher than what we need for Toblin, does that money sit in a special account, or is it just a line item that, but it only can be used for that?
Uh, it sets in a special account that needs appropriated by town meeting.
Okay.
Yep. Article five, um, is an accelerated repair program, uh, funding request. It's a, another partnership project with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA, for the replacement of the windows at the Oak Middle School, uh, which are nearing 40 years old, and, uh, they weren't replaced during the last renovation, so this would provide, um, we would seek funding for the schematic design of this work, um, and if the MSBA ultimately, um, approves the project after schematic design, we'd be eligible for 52% reimbursement or grant from them, uh, to cover half of the cost of the project, which is somewhere around a million dollars. The funding for the schematic design is about $25,000, so we'll be seeking the use of, uh, free cash for that. If there's an opportunity to use Rescue Plan Act funds, uh, because it is a air quality, um, im- improvement initiative, if we're able to kind of solidify that, um, as we move forward through the schematic design, um, then we would obviously just return that free cash back to the town treasury and utilize Rescue Plan Act funds, uh, if we're eligible to do so, but, um, this is the safest approach to prove to the MSBA that we have sufficient funds to continue to move forward at their, uh, October meeting. Article, um, six is an expansion of, uh, tax exemptions, uh, for certain individuals within the, the community, um, and it provides greater exemptions over what is possible, so this board, of course, has been, uh, leading the way and, uh, asking for staff to find ways to provide, uh, tax relief to residents, and, uh, our new assessor, Ruth Anderson, has identified, uh, this clause 22G that we have, uh, not, uh, drawn down upon or accepted for the town to provide further, uh, tax relief to certain residents, um, based on income, so we will, uh, seek town meeting's approval of that. So article seven is to establish a special purpose stabilization fund for the, the sewer utility, much like we've done for the water utility, and now for the override, and this is, um, a stabilization fund that would be used for capital improvement purposes, uh, for the sewer system in the future years. Article eight is to put $250,000, propose the use of $250,000 in sewer rate revenue into that newly established, uh, stabilization fund. And then the final four articles, uh, are related to our zoning bylaws, um, a district, uh, change, and then, um, for Lake Street, and then zoning bylaw amendments for outdoor dining, telecommunications facilities, uh, and inclusionary housing bylaw. The, the last, the inclusionary housing bylaw, um, specifically, uh, enters the town center zoning district, and to that, uh, inclusionary zoning bylaw is a requirement of 15% affordability. Um, this was an, uh, oversight when we put the original town center zoning in place, we didn't incorporate it into that section. So those are the 12 articles that we are currently proposing. We are working through, uh, one additional potential opportunity, um, uh, with regards to, um, personnel bylaws and, uh, military service. Uh, we just need to gather some more information, uh, through the Veteran Service Agent, um, and, um, that's all I really, uh, you know, have as an other outstanding potential item at this time, but if anything comes up over the next few days, um, I certainly will be in touch with the board as we move towards signing the warrant at your next meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Mizikar, any other questions or comments on the remaining articles? Okay. Thank you. So take us up at our next meeting and get information in between, so thank you for that. We'll go on to the next item on our agenda, it's. It's item number nine, to review and act on fiscal year 2022 goals of the Board of Selectmen. Colleagues, in our drive, we have goals in front of us. We've had two workshops over the summer on June 21st, 2021, and then August 11th, 2021, and we, through conversations and exercises, had developed, identified areas that would inform a strategic plan, general areas or buckets, that we thought captured a lot of the needs of the community, and they're in front of us today in this document, and it's open for discussion and approval this evening. So are there any questions or comments to the goals that's drafted in front of us? Mrs. Cassavan.
So I have one comment on the goals under build and maintain reliable infrastructure. The phrase we had originally placed in here, environmentally considerate, I've just been looking at that over since we worked on this about a month and a half, two months ago, and given the events that have happened, flooding and hurricanes and fires, it doesn't seem strong enough to me to convey to the rest of the organization the urgency with which we believe we need to be addressing climate change in our goals. I think that our well-being as a community is very much tied to our ability to harden our infrastructure and prepare for the impacts of climate change, because they're here, and I don't believe that we are exempt, or that it can't happen in Shrewsbury. So I would like to propose different phrasing for environmentally considerate, and I've been thinking about it for a while, and I did check in, I know, John, you and I had the chance to meet with some people in the community who take the climate situation as like their job, right, to make sure that we're ready and we're aware, and I took a couple of their thoughts and kind of created something that I think would fit better here, and that's to harden infrastructure to prepare for climate impacts. So that's what I would like to propose for environmentally considerate, to change it to that.
Sorry, one more time? Harden?
Harden infrastructure to prepare for climate impacts.
I like that, but I'm wondering if that's not even broad enough? I don't, I don't see where, um, becoming carbon neutral, et cetera, that kind of stuff fits into harden the infrastructure. Harden the infrastructure to me is more thinking of resiliency and survivability of something bad, you know, a bad event like flooding, whatever, you know, more severe storms. I'm just wondering if we're going to do that, if we should add, and I don't know what the right wording, phrasing is for it, but I think it's more than hardening the infrastructure. To your, I think to your point.
Well, I mean, I had, I had other, I mean, I had hardening infrastructure to prepare for climate crisis impacts and mitigating the results of the climate crisis, but I felt like that was too long.
Oh, okay.
But it seemed too long in light of everything else that we have here, so I tried to shorten it up.
I almost think that based on the conversation, I agree with, with Mo's comments, I feel like they're almost two separate and distinct considerations, so, I mean, are we opposed to having both? Where, to your point, environmentally considerate is as we, you know, add or develop or, you know, update infrastructure, that we are mindful of being environmentally, socially aware, and then also, to your point, being prepared for more catastrophic events that can impact the town and what our residents come to depend on.
I also think, Mr. DePaulo, like, maybe the net, getting to net zero is something that would cascade from underneath ours, and I don't, I'm not sure, but maybe either Mr. Mizikar or Mr. Samia could weigh in on where that would fit, as far as, like, we're setting the tone for the rest of the organization to-
Right. Yeah, this is a, this is, remember, these are the sort of, I'd say, broad visioning statements right now, and what falls below it is the, whether on an annual or part of a strategic plan, what follows under that until 2030.
Right.
So that would be, to me, a goal that we'd aspire to as part of this.
Which part are we talking about now? Hardening, hardening definitely, I think, is something that needs to be called out. I agree with you, but I, I still think it is something broader about becoming carbon neutral or whatever, whatever the right phrasing is.
But is the second part of what Beth's saying about mitigating the impact of the climate crisis?
No, right, and I'm just wondering, is it, is it what Teresa's saying, is keep the environmentally considerate as, as one, I'm just thinking of the phrasing, I don't disagree with, with what's being said.
Mr. Mizikar, please.
So if I hear what you're both saying, so I like Ms. Cassavan's comments as it fits under build and maintain reliable infrastructure, harden infrastructure to prepare for climate impacts. It might suggest that either, you know, for the town's role in lessening our carbon impact and our carbon footprint, maybe under effective government, we add a category of reducing our impact as an organization on, or if you're looking at the, yeah, on climate change, or if you're looking at-
Our impact to the, on the climate crisis or on climate change.
Yep.
So you could split up what Mrs. Cassavan was talking about, the second part, mitigating the impact of the climate crisis or reducing our impact on the climate, or on the climate crisis, or the, yeah.
When we say net zero, we're talking about, you know, the greenhouse gases, I mean, if you want to somehow encapsulate exactly what we're trying to say, that's what it is.
But I, right, but I think that's very specific, that would be a goal under this, to allow us, if there are other areas in building, in terms of what standard we're compliant with and all of that, I would think.
Reduce the town's impact on climate change.
That's fine.
So you're going to put that under effective government?
Yeah, which is the town's impact on climate change.
I mean, I think it needs to be wherever-
That's fine, I think it's good.
And as many, so I think that's great.
Yeah, and I agree, I mean, you could argue that it's not just related to infrastructure, so I think that's a good move.
So we have two changes, so environmentally considerate's coming out or staying in, that's the only thing, so that's replaced, right?
Personally, I'd like to replace it.
That's fine, I'm fine with that, I mean, obviously, see where everyone else is at, and we split it up, so under effective government, we have this additionally. Anything else, are we comfortable with the goals as amended? So if we're good with that, entertain a motion to approve the-
Yes. I thought we were only saying on that one. Promote economic growth. Define residential growth development, I'm not sure how that fits in there, I, I, I'm not even sure I remember what that meant. What, what, what is that? I understand, I think I understand the gist of what it's trying to say, but what, I guess, what is, what is it that we've decided that said?
Go ahead, Mrs. Wood.
I think, if I recall, it was in response to some of the feedback that we get from the community about the rapid growth of, the residential growth in the town, and maybe needing to, you know, have a little bit more of a statement or a point of view around that, get community feedback around it, and be a little bit clear about what we can and can't do to control the growth of-
Okay.
The number of residents in town.
Okay.
I agree. Yep. I'm just looking back at the minutes from that meeting as well.
Yep. Okay.
That's fine.
Keep going down, before we take a vote, are we good with promote economic growth? What about quality of life, any further comments, questions? And then effective government, we have the strategic plan, which we'll talk about shortly as well with the town manager goals, effective communication with residents, and then the one we added as well. We good?
Yep.
Okay, so if we are good, I would entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 goals of the Board of Selectmen as amended during this meeting. So moved.
Second.
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work on that, that was, we had a lot of great conversations when we met, and I think it really lays a nice foundation for what we're looking to do going forward, not only now, but for a long time coming. Next item on the agenda is, the natural flowdown from that is to review and act on the fiscal year 2022 goals of the town manager. Mr. Mizikar?
Yep.
Hand it over to you for this.
Thank you. Again, having the benefit of joining with the board during their offsite conversations in both August and June, I was able to take advantage of that information and understand where the board is coming out with their goals and develop, you know, the next level of the cascade, which comes to my office, and through that, I've developed five overarching goals for the near term, many of them which can have either significant accomplishment or complete accomplishment during fiscal year 22. The first is to develop a decision-making model that's grounded in regular community engagement, and that will be underpinned through our efforts through the 2030 vision and strategic planning process that we've been talking about. The second area is to develop a 21st century model for citizens, to respond to citizens' urgent needs. This primarily will include taking stock of how we respond to residents' needs in various areas and departments, what technological means exist and where we can improve, and then diving deeper into certain functional areas, including policing, where we're exploring and funded the ability to have social workers rather than solely uniformed police officers. There's also other areas, when we think about DPW and Selco and our need to respond as a utility service provider on a 24 by 7 basis, and how do we do that reliably and most cost-effectively? Number three is to develop a robust planning and development function that sensibly drives change in residential and commercial sectors and public spaces. This is really a continuation of our initiatives to put a proper planning team in place to manage the Town Center revitalization and, and build a model that supports new initiatives that the town has set forth and the Board of Selectmen has set forth, including the Affordable Housing Trust and the Community Preservation Act that was implemented for this fiscal year. The fourth of five is development, develop human services and programs that fulfill the needs of residents and enable their personal well-being. For fiscal year 22, we'll look to leverage the resources of the American Rescue Plan to identify demographics and segments of the population that are most vulnerable. I will look forward to working with the board, but many of us have already discussed our ability to improve and enhance communications and gain a better understanding of those renting within the community. It's very interesting, we have a lot of information on property owners in our tax assessment system, and we know very little bit about those residents, many very long-term, who do not own their own property and rent, and some of those folks, of course, are the most vulnerable, given their stage of life, whether emerging into a professional career or downsizing in their older years, and it's very important for us to find a way to engage with them and understand who they are and how we can better serve them. And number five is to develop a more cohesive administration and finance function to enable the mission-oriented departments to succeed. So this is really a lot of back office improvements that we can make to better utilize software, financial systems, staffing arrangements, and processes like personnel administration and payroll administration to really help our core mission areas, which is serving the residents of Shrewsbury. So look forward to any comments from the board, and appreciate the input that you've already given me on these.
Colleagues, any questions or comments? Mr. DePaulo.
I would just say, I think all five of them are great, I think they're spot on in what we're trying to do, and hopefully, we're emerging from worst of COVID, and we'll be able to focus on this, this got delayed a little bit for, for a time because of the COVID thing, but I think this is great, I think this is really very actionable.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I agree, it's, it's just nice to be on the schedule we're supposed to be on, as opposed to the kind of rocky start we had to this, you know, with the interruption of COVID, and while the pandemic is by no means over, I think we've reached a point where we're able to continue our operations and continue to work on our goals and not be completely consumed with mitigating the impacts of COVID. So I'm really looking forward to this, especially the part that says, recommend a new website format, to me, like, that's my favorite. I still can't find anything when I go look on that website, and I should know where things are.
Yeah.
Great.
So just to take a step back, so why are we doing this? So if you look at our goals, and they really fit nicely with the town manager's goals, and from the town manager, they'll flow down to the department heads, all the way down to the individuals. So I think for any successful strategic plan and any successful goal-setting, it requires everyone to be rowing in the same direction, and that's what the goal of these goals are. If you look at the vision statement, behind all of the strategic management approach, the town of Shrewsbury will be the best local government in the world, aspirational, that's what we're shooting for. In order to be the best local government in the world, the town will utilize best practices and proven innovation to provide residents with their self-defined ideal community. So what's very important as part of Mr. Mizikar's goals, as well as our goals, and they're, they sync up nicely, is we're looking to the residents, it's the residents' community, and we're looking to meet the expectations and exceed the expectations of what our residents are looking to do, and as part of that purpose statement, the town of Shrewsbury is dedicated to fostering a vibrant, economically competitive and safe community for all to thrive. So all of that fits together, and that was part of this strategic management meeting together and having that flow down at all levels as we move forward, particularly, we talked about strategic planning and looking to set the roadmap for our community from now until 2030. So all of this will be, or continue to be very exciting for all of us, I know we had a lot of really good conversations, we've had the good fortune of having a very proactive and forward-thinking town manager, also looking at other communities that have been very successful, but there's no doubt the most successful communities in strategic planning started with community engagement and all stakeholders being on the same page. So we look forward to moving forward with these goals from the board's goals we just approved, and hopefully, the town manager's goals that we will be approving shortly. So thanks for your hard work on this, and, you know, we, we spent a lot of time really thinking through all of these, and I think we're in a really good place to set us up for strategic planning.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DePaulo.
I think, seeing, you know, what was produced from a few multi-hour workshops, I think just demonstrates the benefit of taking a few extra hours, you know, occasionally to sit down and be able to talk about this stuff without having it just buried in the middle of a meeting, I think it's, it's very productive, right? And I think this is a big, that was a big benefit, a very positive outcome of those meetings, so.
Agreed, thank you. So if there are no other comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 goals of the town manager.
Good. Move we approve?
Second.
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And just one thought while we're here, colleagues, if we could, at town meeting, I think what would go a long way is not traditional, maybe we'll give a statement or a report, but this may be one opportunity to give a report to town meeting about strategic planning, what we've done to date, the goals that we've set, what we're looking to do, and the input that we're looking to receive, particularly from town meeting as, as proxies of the community to make sure they, to make this successful, to get their engagement, their feedback, as well as getting them excited to get other members of the community to provide feedback. So that's something I'd like to do at town meeting as well, so we could talk about that on October 18th, I think it'd be a nice way to kick this off or accelerate it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think that is an excellent idea.
Thank you. I do, too. Look forward to it, though, I think it's going to be, this is going to be a great process, and we've had a lot of great conversations, so again, thank you, everyone, for all your time, it's taken a lot of time, and I know everyone's busy, but I agree with you, Mr. DePaulo, workshops, it just allows you that opportunity to focus on the task at hand and really take a deep dive, so thank you, again, everyone, for taking time over the summer. Next item on the agenda is review and act to authorize the chair to sign the bonds for Erica Armenti, Treasurer Collector's Office. We have the materials in here, we have a copy of the bond, assume it's a performance bond, is that driven by statute, Mr. Mizikar?
It is, it's a statutory formula that we use based upon the revenues of the office.
Okay, thank you. So we have the related documents also in our drive, any questions or comments? Entertain a motion, if there aren't any.
I move that the board authorize the chair- I move that the board authorize it to her to sign the bonds for Erica Armenti, Deputy Tax Collector in the Treasurer's Office.
Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to review and act on the annual Phil LaBout drive to benefit the Muscular Dystrophy Association, utilizing the intersections of Main Street, Boyle Street, Harrington Ave., and Boston Turnpike on Saturday, October 16th, from nine to three. Included in our materials, we have the certificate of insurance as well as the safety plan. Any questions or comments?
No, I think it went well the last time they did it. So I would, I would move that we approve the request for the Phil LaBout drive on October 16th, from nine to three.
Second.
The location stated.
Sorry, sorry, second.
Have been moved in second. And all those favor, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review and act on the appointment of precinct officers to serve a one-year term expiring August 31st, 2022. We have a letter from our town clerk, Sharon Thomas, attaching her recommendation for appointment of the various precinct officers that are listed to her memo dated September 10th.
I move, we approve the appointment of the precinct offices as presented by the town clerk.
I second it, and I thank these people for being willing to serve in this capacity for us.
Have been moved in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, and I agree with you, Mrs. Cassavant. Thank you to all of those who continue to serve for our town. Next item on the agenda, actually, is 14. There's no action required this evening, so we will move on to agenda item 15, to review and act on the appointment to the Affordable Housing Trust. So colleagues, you, as you recall at our last meeting, we appointed three of the five members to the Affordable Housing Trust as required by the bylaw. We had a very, at least I tried to make it interesting voting process. It worked pretty well.
[laughing]
It was for, must, made for TV, so we took care of that. But we've appointed three members, one for a two-year term, two for a one-year term. But now we have one board member to fill the fourth out of fifth spots with the town manager or assistant town manager to fill the last spot, which we're not taking up this evening. So tonight, we're taking up the action to appoint a member of the Board of Selectmen to the Affordable Housing Trust for a two-year term. Colleagues, so I will, Mr. DePaulo.
I'll just express.
I was going to say, you put a lot of effort into this. You were champion of this, and I would, if you would like to do the thing, I think you'd be great.
I would, I would like to do it, yes. I will defer if somebody else wants to do it, but I.
I was going to joke around that I was going to fight you for it, but I agree that you are the right person.
But Mo, you brought it forward. I mean, you did a lot of hard work on the bylaw, and you were a champion for this to get it through and did a lot of research. So I'm, I'm great with that. I think you'd do great on it. Is there anyone else, else interested? If not, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Mr. DePaulo to the Affordable Housing Trust for a two-year term.
Second.
Actually, I need a motion.
Oh, you want a motion? I'm sorry. I thought you were making a motion.
No, no.
I was like, geez, that's different.
No, I didn't.
So, okay, I'm going to make a motion.
Yes.
To appoint.
Entertain a motion.
Mr. DePaulo to the Affordable Housing Trust for a two-year term.
Second.
Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. If I misspoke, I apologize. Next item is to review and act on the amended road closure request from Andrew Truman, Town Engineer, for a closure of School Street for the Water Main Improvements. Colleagues, back on July 27th, actually, Mr. Holland also presented that evening, to us, proposed road closure on School Street once. The work was to be completed over at Main Circle. The request was for an approval for a, School Street to be closed for a six-week period starting in mid-August, from 7:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And this evening, we're, approvals being sought to actually amend this original plan that we approved on July 27th. So, Mr. Holland, welcome and good evening.
Good evening. For the record, Jeff Holland, DPW Director. And yes, obviously, the work has not started, and it is now mid, mid-September. So the timeframe that we had presented back in July was for mid-August till, or between four and six weeks. We'd take it to the end of September, unless they can complete the work in two weeks, which we don't, which we know isn't going to happen. We are going to request from middle of September to the end of August. I mean, I'm sorry, end of October.
Okay.
We, we have previously, at your request, sent letters out to all of the residents in the neighborhood, both on School Street and then the abutting streets off of School Street. We will send a code red to those same residences that we had sent the letters to previously, and we will send a, on the listserv for DPW, we'll send out to townwide to everybody. The same stipulations of before. The road will be opened at night after the construction is done. We are working with parks on closing the access from Dean Park. There's the two entrances, depending on where they're actually working. Might have to close both, or just those one entrances out on the School Street. We're working with the school bus company or through, via the school, and have notified police and fire. Police obviously know because they're providing detail. And the work will start this week with, they've done some, they've already done the dig safe markouts. They'll just saw cut and do that type of work. Pipe has not arrived yet. It is anticipated to arrive at the end of the week, so they'll start excavating next week. I'm still firming an actual true schedule, but we are, we are going to tell them that all work must be done by October, I mean, yeah, October 28th. Make sure I have the right month.
Okay. It's a pleasure of the board.
You move or approve?
Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Unanimously. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item, we'll skip over executive session, which we gone into after I go through correspondence. So I will now go, that ends the time schedule matters. I will now go through correspondence. Give me one second here. So item number 19, an email dated August 24th, 2021, from Jeff Holland, Department of Public Works, regarding request for speed monitor on Washington Street. Included in the correspondence is a memorandum regarding the statistics that the DPW gathered by conducting, through the engineering department, initial speed study on Washington Street from August 10th, 2021, to August 18th, 2021. And that originally started from a request for, from a member of the community on June 28th, 2021, asking for a speed monitor to be displayed. She noted to us by email correspondence that a speed monitor has been displayed at, at Washington Street, but I also forwarded this report. Thank you, Mr. Holland. It's very thorough and very educational as well. When we had a workshop earlier on traffic, I sent this along to the resident as well for her knowledge and information. So, so noted. Next item on the agenda is an email dated August 24th, 2021, from their Abdala, 31 Melvin Avenue, regarding an art show that, at, at their home on September 18th, 2021. So noted. Next item on the agenda is an email dated August 27th, 2021, from Aaron Flaherty, Environmental Analyst from the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office, regarding an extension for the notice of comment, comment period extension, EEA number 50950, MPC Centec Park North, extending it to the comment period until September 14th, 2021. So noted. Next item is an email dated September 2nd, 2021, from Phil Bloomberg of 46 Brook Street, regarding 419 Walnut Street, 58 Brook Street, 225 Green Street, and 249 Green Street, just asking what the town's plans for, for these various properties, and a request regarding what to do with those properties. And town manager's office has crafted a very thorough response that has or will go out shortly. I actually had held it up. I apologize. But it's a very thoughtful response and hopefully answers all of Mr. Bloomberg's questions. But if not, we'll provide additional information. But it's a very thorough and comprehensive response to his inquiry. Next item is in, so that's so noted, a letter dated September 2nd, 2021, from Representative Hannah Kane regarding the 2021 Hannah Kane Charity Classic, thanking the Board of Selectmen for their support to the Hannah Kane Charitable Foundation for the 2021 Hannah Kane Charity Classic. Through that, those efforts, additional, $60,000 was raised and able to be given to human service organizations in our community, St. Anne's Human Services, Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, and Westboro Food Pantry. So thank you to Representative Kane for undertaking that event and all of the good things that have come from, from that and supporting our community. So noted. Next item is an email dated September 3rd, 2021, from Mike Hazen, for Nima Tekmula, Mitashaw, and John Klimas, for Ruben Circle, 4 Toblin Hill Drive, 15 Toblin Hill Drive, and 31 Toblin Hill Drive, regarding Toblin Hill Neighborhood Letter, Toblin Hill Bridge. So noted. Next item is email dated September 7th, from Chief, Chief James Vona, from the Shrewsbury Fire Department, regarding 9/11 Remembrance, which all of us were able to attend on this past Saturday. It was absolutely beautiful day. And all of the speakers, there were several speakers, all of whom spoke very passionately and eloquently, Chief Vona, State Representative Kane, State Senator Moore, Deacon Dick Martino, and, and I also had the honor and privilege of speaking. Everyone noted that it was a beautiful day, very similar to 20 years ago, and talked about honoring our promise to never forget the events that happened 20 years ago, and citing the loss and, and our thoughts and prayers and remembering all of those that were lost in that day, and also citing the heroism through our first responders, as well as many of those, including on Flight 93, that were just unbelievable that day despite horrific circumstances. And we, so it was a very beautiful event on a somber day, but also just a very nice remembrance. So appreciate that invitation as well from Chief Vona. So noted. Next item is an email dated September 7th, 2021, from James Testa, Muscular Dystrophy Association Regional Director, firefighter partnerships for the Shrewsbury Fire Department, regarding Phil LaBout, which we just took action on earlier. So noted. Next item is email dated September 7th, from Aaron Flaherty, Environmental Analyst from the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Officer, regarding the GHD, GHG analysis, EEA number 1590, MPC Centec Park, Park North, together with an energy design narrative. So noted. Next item is an email dated September 8th, 2021, from Kevin Krasnicki, Principal Transportation Planner, Central Mass Regional Planning Committee, regarding Northeast Representative Election Virtual Meeting on September 23rd. Mr. DePaulo, you were, so this is an invitation on the 23rd. As I look through, the Northeast subregion comprised of the communities of Berlin, Boyleston, Northborough, Shrewsbury, and Westborough. And Mr. DePaulo was the previous representative of these groups. So is that something, so that's an election for that, and then someone from the, these communities will be elected to serve?
One person from.
All of those communities.
These communities.
Okay.
Yeah, I've, I've been in touch with Mr. Krasnicki. I told him if, unless somebody else on the board wanted to do it, I would like to continue. And it'll be up to the other communities. So see if anybody comes forward, any, how they vote. But it's only one vote per community, so I'm going to be there. And you said I could vote for myself if I wanted to. So unless somebody on the board wants to do it, I'll continue.
I think that's terrific. Any thoughts? Seems like it's yours, Mr. DePaulo.
I'm fine with you.
Yeah.
Do you need me to go there to vote for you?
No, it's only, only.
On per, on per community.
It's only one per. The last, the last time, I, I didn't realize it, and we all went.
Right, we all went once.
And they said, vote.
One vote per community.
All five of us.
I know we were all the other ones.
Went.
Okay, you got it, Mo. Good luck.
No. Yeah, this, this one's virtual, so let's see what happens.
Great. Well, thank you for your service on that, and hopefully continued service. Next item on the agenda is email dated September 8th, 2021, from Julie Nathan, Co-Chair of Advice. Again, domestic violence in Shrewsbury education process, which will be held on Wednesday, October 13th, from 6:30 to 7:15, and the Shrewsbury Con. So noted. Next item on the agenda is an email dated September 9th, 2021, from Kevin Krasnicki. Similar to item 28, it's just a correction on the agenda and the correct meeting date on Thursday, September 23rd. So it's just correcting correspondence from the previous item that we discussed. So noted. And then I will take items 31 through 42 together. They are all ZBA decisions starting, oh, they're all, actually, all August 30th. So that is it. So noted for all of those ZBA decisions. So that is it for the formal part and correspondence. If there are no other questions or comments, I would entertain that we go into exec, a motion to go into executive session for the following reasons. First, under GL Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, consider the purchase, exchange, or lease of value of realist, real property, 0 Reed Street. And the second reason is under General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, or lease of value of real property, the former Beal School, 1-7 Maple Avenue.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mrs. Cassavant.
I move that the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, for the purposes listed on the agenda.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and a roll call vote is required, Mrs. Cassavant.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo.
Aye.
Mr. Samia, aye. The board will now convene into executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, or lease of value of real property. Furthermore, the board will not reconvene back into open session. Good night, and thank you.